I'll hurry. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Low call Ms. Handel.
Mayor Dale Masson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton. Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Dittmer.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have announcements since we have this on it?
Yes, sir.
Any announcements Bill, Chris? General public, anyone like to speak? Overflowing crowd here. Okay, bring it to council. Anybody have any thoughts on the budget?
If I could.
Yeah, walk us through it.
Yes, I could. Please.
You didn't read this line by line.
You'll find on, if I might, Mayor, on your very first page, a draft annual operating budget. And the budget, one of the most key factors in this budget, the total budget is eleven million, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. But one of the key factors in this budget, and one of the most important things, is that we've picked up the momentum from this current year budget and are moving in that same positive fiscal direction. And we're looking to slightly reduce the overall millage. The 2016-17 budget was crafted in a conservative manner to give city council greater latitude in monitoring and directing the city's financial health. The 2016-17 budget fulfilled the goals and objectives that it set out to achieve, even exceeding some of those goals. Over the last fiscal year, the city's financial standing has improved considerably due to judicious spending and strategic decision-making. The 2017-2018 budget continues that momentum and direction of the last fiscal year and positions the city on a solid financial footing in preparation for our future goals. Now below you have a comparison of the funds and the budgeting from years fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and the proposed budgeting in eighteen. You'll notice a slight increase in the FY18 budget, approximately a million dollars, actually a little bit less. But those are funds that needed to be spent, and they're coming primarily from fees that need to be spent in order to support our future growth and to continue in the direction they were moving. This budget sets aside approximately six hundred thousand dollars in dredging. We have a CRA carryover from last year, which is three hundred and fourteen thousand. This year it's three hundred. This coming budget is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. On the following page, you'll find a comparison of, again, the budgets from fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And one of the salient points, if you'll note, the very last item is impact fees. And you'll notice that it's in eighteen and was barely in the previous year. And the reason is that we intend to utilize those fees for the reasons I stated earlier. The absolute necessity in spending those fees to better prepare the city for the future growth that's happening now and will be happening more in the future. And the pie chart below that shows the breakdown of the monies and the fundings and the exact funds and the approximate percentage of what they represent on the overall budget. Fiscal year 2016-17 had a very, quite a few accomplishments. Among them, we began the first stage of the dredging project with the completion of the DMMA site preparations. We reduced the bulk water purchases from Newport Ritchie. We held water rates consistent by not implementing scheduled water rate increases. And we absorbed a four percent rate increase from our supplier. We increased residential and commercial development. We reduced the burden of personal expenses from the CRA fund, which was an objective of the council for some time now. And we've managed to accomplish that in this year's budget and even further so in our future budget. We opened the Port Ritchie Dog Enjoyment Center, excuse me, which is a great success along with the opening of a fishing pier over at Limestone. For fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the activities that this budget envisions is an extension of, first and primarily, an extension of our dredging permit. A continued dredging project in Channel nineteen. Preparation for dredging channels one and eighteen utilizing Restore Act funds of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Six hundred thousand dollars. We're going to continue to reduce the bulk water purchases from Newport Ritchie, down from approximately fifteen hundred dollars a day to currently less than ten dollars per day. We've increased the utilization of impact fees, which is, as I stated already several times, an absolute necessity both to maintain our budget but better to prepare the community for current and future growth. We've lowered the city millage rate from, in this budget, from five seven, five five seven to five seven, five one eight. We've continued to reduce the burden of personnel expenses from the CRA fund, which has always been an objective of council and continues to be one in this budget. And it's now down to thirteen percent. We reduced the fire department flood insurance rate by sixty-seven percent. And that was due to the guidance from and recommendation of council. Mainly from Councilman Dittmer. We've done an extension, we're preparing an extension of the bike and hike trail off of Old Post to assist us in an extension of the total footage, which will give us a different approach to the state where the vice mayor and I have been talking with them about the extension through the state park facility. This budget also includes the purchase of two police vehicles, the purchasing of three utility vehicles, a purchase of a building department vehicle. It also includes sidewalk reconstruction and repair, which involves transportation impact fee money and CRA funds. This item was brought to us by our public and Mr. Solheim in particular. We're advancing on preparation with the handicap, we're going to add handicap accessibility to our parks. This was brought to us by both Mr. Lee and Councilwoman Britton. We've expanded the Fourth of July participation of the city to a larger degree so that the city will indeed control the Fourth of July celebration. We will ask for partnerships, we will ask for sponsors from groups like the Bayou and any other interested party. But the city will be the main provider of that event. The pie charts below specifically show how personal expenditures are derived from each fund. And the city staff is focused on relieving the CRA fund of personnel expenses. The FY2018 budget includes a three percent reduction in personnel expenditures from the CRA fund. So we reduce that fund from sixteen down to thirteen percent. And I would hope that in the next future fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen, that would reduce that further. The following page shows, the bar graph, shows the reduction in purchased water expenses. City staff has worked diligently to make upgrades to the water system and to become less dependent on costly bulk water purchases. And to vastly improve our overall water distribution system along with a marked improvement in our water quality, we anticipate a savings in excess of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've also not increased the water rate at council's direction of four percent. So that rate did not go into effect. And at the same time, we accepted a four percent increase in the rate of bulk water sales to the city. But if you'll look at the very last part of that chart, July, you'll notice a marked difference from years fifteen and sixteen. You'll also note that next to the large blue bar, which represents our well's production, you'll see a blank space. That blank space represents purchased water. And it's barely there, and it's under ten dollars. The very next line is a green bar, which represents backwash. This is backwash system now takes through our four functioning operating filters and cleans out that water, sends it to our now functioning iron dehydration operation, where the iron sludge is dehydrated, packed into bags, all fully operational, and is disposed of. Then there is the residual water that goes back into our system, saving us additional water. And that's called, the purple line called recovered water. So our water system is moving along quite well. And we would hope that would even, there are more improvements to come in years eighteen, nineteen. Some of the additional highlights on the very next page are with respect to the administration, the continued city dredging project, as I stated earlier, in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. Most of that coming from Restore Act or CRA funds. We're going to conduct a building department fee structure analysis. And then there's an absolute necessity for this because there are some charges that we are initiating that perhaps are over a targeted amount and some under a targeted amount. And then aside from that, the necessity of what should be spent, what could be spent, and what must be spent is all part of that analysis. And the very same analysis will be conducted on our water rate service analysis for the exact same reasons. Public Works and Utilities. We'll be purchasing a new Public Works Utilities trailer. The facility in the back is absolutely deplorable. It's almost to the point of being necessarily condemned, it's that bad. It finally has to be replaced. People are in danger of falling through the floors back there. It's appalling. So we're expecting to replace it with a working trailer in the back. We would hope to purchase new Public Works Utilities vehicles. They're an absolute necessity. A new brush truck and two additional vehicles to replace the ones that are falling apart. We're going to upgrade the FlexNet system, which is part of the, coming from the water impact fees because that's where the system is involved. Finally, the city hall will get a new paint job. If you even get near the building, it'll come right off on top of you, the white paint that's there just bleeding away. So we would like to repaint the city hall. And then we're going to do some continued upgrades to our city parks to include specialty items. And those funds are coming from both general fund, FERDAF, and CRA funds. Fire department, perhaps what would appear to be a controversial purchase, but I'm sure can be easily explained, and that is the purchase of a drone. The purpose of that drone craft is to fly over sites to indicate to the fire department the actual location of the best place to begin to fight the fire and after the fire has been suppressed, to determine where there may be hotspots that can reignite at a future time, causing additional damage and returns to the site. There are also some additional benefits with respect to the drone, the ability to talk about the potential involvement of adjacent structures or adjacent property and any traffic issues that may arise. Police department. With respect to the police department, we're looking to purchase two new vehicles and associated equipment. And that money would be coming from pennies for Pasco. With respect to our information technologies, we need to install an air fiber tower for the fire department to allow better communications for the fire department itself. And along with that, we'll need to purchase a replacement server. Now this is not the kind of servers that currently exist there, which we have an abundance of. This is a composite server that will function to replace most of those servers, or some of those servers back there. The building department requires the purchase of a vehicle for the building department and the annual mangrove trimming, which we will now be conducting on an annual basis in order to ensure that the mangroves are properly trimmed and that the view by licensed individual improves the overall view and aesthetics of the entire community. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is an overall projection of the budget. The budget comes in allowing a reduction in the millage from seven, I'm sorry, from five seven, five five seven to five seven, five one eight, which has a slight decrease in overall taxes for our citizens. I and my staff are prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Vincent and I meet all the time on this in my State of the Union address. I'll let you go first Nancy.
Let's have a couple of questions.
Sure.
All right. I see the six hundred, I see the six hundred thousand dollars. My first question is, okay, is that coming from the CRA or dredging? You mentioned that, I mean CRA or the general fund, or the, yeah, or the?
Restore Act.
Restore Act, thank you. So you mentioned six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand dollars twice. So I'm just wondering.
The same six hundred thousand dollars.
The same one.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're counting, so where in the budget, like under the CRA, I didn't see the six hundred thousand dollars coming out. You're just counting on that six hundred thousand from the Restore Act?
Yes, it has to be included in the budget, that six hundred thousand dollars is for that specific dredging. In the event that that is not the case, in the event that we don't obtain those funds, we'll be utilizing CRA funds, we'll be coming back to the CRA authority and talking about contingency and reserves for the CRA.
So if it's not going to be budgeted there, because I don't see it there under the CRA.
It should be there. It's there.
I'm just missing it. Page thirty-one.
Page thirty-one.
There's three hundred thousand dollars in line item six oh seven dredging. The other three hundred thousand dollars is in contingencies. Okay, that's all right. Okay. Increased residential and commercial development, how did we have a hand in that? Or was that just people coming into our community to build new structures?
No, just the opposite. I should say just the opposite. Part of it is people coming into our community. Part of it is outreach to different groups to see who might come in. We've had several meetings with an individual. In fact, there's a group from Canada who's looking to come down and purchase. I've met with them as a group. There's another group of individuals who are, who have been talking about reopening several different operations here in the city that will require coming back to council for potential legislation with council. So we've been doing outreach as best we possibly can. And that's how that occurs.
The other thing that, when the time comes, just my two cents, when the time comes to vote on, you know, new vehicles for the police and new vehicles for the public works, it'd be interesting to know what we have in inventory so that we have an idea of when the last vehicles were bought, how much was spent for them if possible, and just so we know. Because I know that we spent a lot of money on police cars over the years. It seemed like every year we had two more, two more, two more.
We'll be more than happy to provide a detailed analysis of the vehicles that we're purchasing. Councilwoman Sorrell was quite involved along with Councilman Rowe, in fact, all of council with respect to the police fleet and the expenditures, the longevity and the issues. In fact, when we do come back to council for that approval, there will also be an associated list of vehicles that will be removed from our inventory and auctioned off. So there will be that left and right hand, if you will, vehicle value being removed, vehicles that will be purchased, and the longevity of the vehicles themselves.
I just think it's important that we know what kind of fleet we have before we understand that there's a need.
If, yes, absolutely, that's not a problem, we'll prepare that for you. But there is an absolute.
Building department too, so.
There is an absolute need. I can cite the woes of our brush truck that's been welded together and it's still falling apart. And that's one of the vehicles. But that, we'll bring that whole list back to you.
And then the other thing is, I guess we don't have anyone here from the fire department. But I had spoken to some local physicians that actually were going to be donating to the fire department. And whether or not that happened or not, I don't know. But we might be able to approach them to see if we can look for donations for the fire and also the police department, because they actually said, the doctors, I think I sent you an email on that, where the doctors were asking to find a way to help.
I have to check, I don't recall it. But certainly, this community is willing to accept donations from anyone to add to our general fund or specific funds, wherever necessary. Because any addition to those funds will reduce the overall general funds.
So of course, one thing I was looking at earlier is I saw there's a little portion of the council's salary still in the CRA.
There is.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, gosh, that would be the baby step, Dave Ramsey's baby step to getting.
It's a function, it was a function of the previous CRA's budget. As I said, we've reduced the dependency by three percent in this budget and we'll reduce it further. But there is an absolute necessity to have a baby amount for city council because you are the CRA board. And that's the way it's allocated. Well, it means something from a different perspective. Because for example, in our Restore Act grant, that would be added to part of our three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar burden for the first third. So I appreciate your point, we're reducing it as much as we can. The least of all of them is the city council's involvement, to be very honest with you.
And we haven't heard anything more on the Restore Act, we just don't know.
Pardon me?
We haven't heard anything more on the Restore Act, we just don't know.
We had a very fruitful meeting with Mr. Curtis Franklin, city attorney, assistant city manager, myself. And we had a thorough discussion about CRA funds, what's to be allocated specifically for what endeavors and when the funds are to be allocated. The fact that they are still not released by the treasury but already allocated in the county's budget. So from that perspective, Mr. Curtis Franklin gave us a little, added level of comfort with respect to the potential receiving those funds. Being prudent, I cannot count on those funds. And I'm preparing for the worst scenario. But at this stage of the game, that was an extremely eventful meeting. And I think everyone who participated was quite pleased by it.
I noticed that there was a really sharp increase from the penny for Pasco this year. Where did that extra funds generate from?
Where do they come from?
Well, I mean, it's a huge increase. It's almost fifty percent increase. The draft, first page.
First page.
Last year it was four oh one from penny for Pasco, now it's six fifty-three. And I didn't know why that jumped up, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from penny for Pasco.
Revenue, it's simply.
It was leftover?
Yeah.
Was that?
Part of that is contingency carryover that was not spent.
I put it in there, we didn't spend it.
Okay.
Right.
No, that's fine, it just seemed like a huge increase.
And hopefully, and hopefully we'll have it again the following year.
Okay.
That's my goal.
All right, that's great.
But don't we have to spend those funds though?
We are, we are expending them. But judiciously. Because of future activities that you may opt to do, that's where a lot of that will come from. There are, there may be a couple of special projects that council may would like to talk about in the future. And that's probably where the money will come from, if you so decide.
And a follow-up on that. I know the police department was having issues, I think with their dispatch system. I didn't notice a line item, are we doing anything with that?
No, the only, the only thing that we're doing with respect to dispatch and the general, it's part and parcel of our entire IT problem, is the new major server that's going back there that will consolidate some of the work. So hopefully it will involve some of dispatch, but not directly. Dispatch will continue to be a problem until we address that.
Software issues and there were different things with that system.
And it will continue until we finally get it resolved. It's not, it's not, it's not ready to be delivered yet.
Okay, but we don't, we're not budgeting for it then?
No.
Because I didn't see anything in the budget.
No, no, sir, we're not.
Okay.
I'll go through my list. First of all, thank you for paying off the generator. We've been spending sixty-five thousand a year on that. Jim and I tried to get rid of that ten years ago. Thanks to Mr. Dittmer. Your hint gave us a reduced fire department flood insurance rate. We decreased it by sixty-seven percent. So thank you. Mr. Rowe is working on the hike and bike, thank you. Do you have any reports from any of your meetings?
I gave Mr. Lupo some information that I'd gotten from Senator Nelson last week. And it's just some ideas where to go for funding. And it's just some ideas where to go for funding. Try those avenues as well. So we're, we're tapping on everybody's door trying to see if anybody has any extra money or those things are, but I was hoping that, you know, our first step would be to connect into that Salt Springs Park. I think that's the low hanging fruit on, on this particular project.
Any others? Any others? Okay. Back to my, I want to just mention to council, we have $120,000 for roads and we don't want to forget our little friends out in Candlelight. I understand. But I'm glad you came back, Mr. Well, I thank Mr. Lupo. We have gone from $1,500 a day to $10 a day in purchased water. Mr. Fuzzell, do we need a drone?
Pardon me?
A drone?
You said we need a drone.
Do we need a drone?
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know how we did it all these years without it.
I don't either. I've been trying to figure out my, have they had this technology years ago? We've got one now.
Well, I don't know how council feels about that.
Well, can that also be used by the police department?
And utilities.
And utilities.
If you put it over my house, would she?
No. That's a no-fly zone, sorry.
There's a sinkhole in your house. Aren't you going to want to know what, why it's happening? They can fly that little drone over there and check it out.
Well, that'd scare the hell out of me. So, okay, so that's $13,000. Well, that's a cheap drone, I guess.
Surveillance.
The cameras.
Hey, you've been good all these years. I guess you deserve one toy, huh?
This is a multi-agency thing. It's not just us. I mean, utilities is going to use it. PD's going to use it. The camera is the most expensive part on the whole thing.
Is, is there guns on it? Will it fire or not?
No. Nukes.
It'll be over your house going, what's going on in that house?
Okay, I want to point out that the city council's budget has skyrocketed to 18,000. Probably not worth it, but we, that's what we get. And I don't even know how that moved because our salaries didn't change.
Bottles of water.
Oh, yeah.
Bring your own. Bring your own water.
Okay, okay.
Speaking of bottles of water.
Thank Mr. Matthews. Our entire legal budget was $28,000. I believe we've spent at least twice that all the time.
Not enough.
Well, we got to give him more. Thank you, Jim, seriously.
All right.
I know you do a lot more work than you charge us for.
Yep.
You have a vested interest in this. You have to recuse-
I know how much he works.
Oh, I, believe me, I do too, sweetie. Brings me always to the police department. I am trying to figure out, and I know this is not a great political question, but we're going down in people and up in budget. And I am personally, and this CRA is 1,44, 1,414,783 plus 59, I found in there. Why are we going up? We have less people. We went from 32 to 26-ish. I don't know if anybody's got the current one. What can we do? I mean, is there any places we can?
You can dispatch, you know.
No, 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 just you. 1,414,000, $783. 1,414,783 dollars plus 59,000 plus, I'm not sure where the other one was. I haven't found it. So anyway, I'm just asking you guys, geez, we have 2,400 people. We're spending a million dollars. And it just, it just marches up. So I just-
That's always the-
I was going to say, we've increased the overall budget for the entire city and we're giving a tax reduction to the citizens.
Correct.
So I think we're on the right path. And I don't think one department needs to be broken down.
I'm not singling anybody out. I had him, I had a bomb for every one of them, but he got me off, off. I mean, they get five city councilmen for 18,000. We ought to do something. I think that's about all I have. 18,000 more in weapons and bullets.
The bulletproof vests all expired, so we need to, their, their longevity is five years, so everybody's got to, we have officers that are running around with expired bulletproof vests.
Right, we need to get those.
So that brought the budget up a bit.
Too many crazy, crazy things going on today.
If, if we don't learn anything, we've learned from Kissimmee. The tragedy in Kissimmee. And our officers need to be protected and those funds will be utilized for that. In fact, we just signed the authorization for the purchase of those vests.
Is there any headgear? I mean, I look at the-
I said, I figured I'd shoot you in the head if you, go ahead.
It all costs money, ma'am.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, we're trying to do what, we're a little bit of a time, but ballistic helmets do exist.
Maybe because, I mean, you know, the vests are great, but I mean, they could get hit in the head and-
They're like two, three rounds, they're fairly old. Uh, the ballistic helmets, they do a good, they actually have a package and that's something that you-
I would imagine in Florida it's really hot to wear them.
It's part of the problem. And that's one of the reasons why those vests are generally deployed on specific instances. But in, in this weather, you're not going to find officers walking generally with a, with the helmet on. I'm would look, I'm looking to, in the middle of this, this coming budget or the beginning of the following budget, to readdress several different issues with respect to armament and with respect to some other equipment of, for the police department and in general safety issues.
And, and one quick other question while we're on the police. When you called 911 from the city of Port Ritchie, is it still so difficult? I mean, I know that in the past if I've called 911, I really kind of like got pushed around. It didn't go directly to 911. It's like, no, you got to call the city of Port Ritchie, you know. So now I just dial 816-1919.
You're better off. The county owns the 911 system. So any, any cell phone that you dial 911 from is going to go right out to the county and then be transferred back to, to the city of Port Ritchie.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of a delay, but that, that system is owned by the county. That's why it works that way. The landlines come in direct.
At one time I was, I was told you have to call directly to the city. I mean, it was just weird.
It's probably quicker.
Yeah. Okay.
I have one more, more, one more hit for you, Jerry. I, we have a police officer that has a 78.6 round, round trip mile, another one with a 60 round trip. How much of our mileage on these cars, and I know they're way high and I know you need new cars, but how much of this mileage do you think percent-wise, or maybe Aaron, you could do that. Percent-wise mileage on the car versus the trips, round trips to home and back? Is, you know where I'm going with this, but-
I can get you the numbers if you want me to get them for you. I'd have to get the mileage on the vehicles and it, but I can, I can do, I can put it together.
Could you do that one?
Yeah. All right, I was just going to interject here.
Please.
You know, we've been down this road several times in my tenure here. And our police work really hard. I don't want to take anything more away from them. These guys are at risk every day. And to, to honestly deal, in my opinion, that's just getting a little petty with their, you know, I mean, these guys put their life on the line. And if, if we have to give them the opportunity to drive back and forth in, in the vehicle to give them a little bit of relief, look, they, they're not making a lot of money. I just, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, the only reason I picked on them is they're the biggest budget we have.
I know, I know. And they always have been. But you know, you know how our residents feel about the police department too.
Yes, I do.
And the fire department. So, you know, those guys, they're out there working hard and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to see them lose, lose that. I mean, our employees work-
We're just discussing.
Without raises and so on and so forth. And, and these guys are, you know, I just, every time I turn on the news, there's somebody, another officer getting hurt. I just, you know, I don't want to take anything away from them. I just can't do that.
Right. Yeah, thoughts over there?
I just try to clarify that a little bit. The initial trip is, is on, on a mileage on the way in, but it's a 25 mile limit and it's line of sight. It's not by the road. If it takes you 30 miles to get to your house, it's 30, it's in a contract which I have right here. So it's, it's 25 miles line of sight. And once the officer gets into the city, he's on the road for the next 12 hours and the vehicle's constantly running. So I would, I would think the majority of the miles are, are patrol miles.
Okay. Well, we'll get those numbers. It's not important. We're going to probably pass this budget as I see it. Staff did a great job. Any other thoughts? Mr. Wrong. I'm going to everybody here.
Carl Roth, 8031 Island Drive, Port Ritchie. And we were talking about the vests. I asked the question, given some of the latest news, what about our other first responders? Fire department, there's emergency folks have gone into situations. Do we have protection for them if the situation should merit or should we have that in the budget?
That's, it's there, sir.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I'm, please. Chief Fussell and I, when we, and the staff, when we put the fire department's budget together, we went over their bunker equipment, went over all of their equipment. They are fully staffed.
No, no, I'm talking about bulletproof vests for first responders. That's one of the things that had recently come out, it was after, I don't remember if it was Pulse, you guys may know better than I, but the first responders are getting picked off by, and that includes fire department, emergency rescue folks. So some discussions in some of the areas is making sure not only do we have it to the standard first responders being police department, but maybe there should be a reserve capacity. So if there's a hot situation that fire rescue gets called out, these guys are protected as well. So just, I bring that up for consideration.
Thank, thank you.
Good.
Second one, we didn't get into the equipment specifics, but from Port Authority Board, we talked about electric shock, drowning and equipment to measure. I had replaced my prop this year. It's the worst I've ever seen it. And I'm sure we have that situation. It's a, it's a safety risk for first responders is what we talked about initially, but I hope that equipment is in there. I'm not sure if it is, but if it isn't, we may want to reassess that line item for police or fire. It could be a shared component.
I, I could tell you that that equipment is not in the budget, but we have addressed the situation that you had at that canal with code enforcement. And what we've come to the conclusion of is that if we were able to get to these homes that had docks in, that, that have this potential problem of a, of electrical feed going into the water, then it would be addressed with the ground faults on the docks. The problem that we're running into is we can't get permission from the homeowners to allow us to get to the docks to check those ground fault breakers. Therefore, how are we going to get there with the equipment to check the water other than taking a canoe up the canal to check the water? And even then, we're still not going to be able to get onto the property owner's house unless we get permission from the homeowner to do that.
Well, code enforcement has the authority under the ordinances that are currently written in the city. So it's, they have access to the property to be able to do that. But I understand.
Yeah.
Lastly, for citizens' benefit, one of the things, at least as of about a year ago, the FEMA flood discount for citizens in Port Ritchie was lower than Pasco County residents. And my understanding around that is there's things that the city has to do in order to affect that percent discount that we're entitled to. So we haven't kept up with Pasco County on that. So it would be great from a citizen's perspective to be able to have a discount at least as much as Pasco County residents or a Port Ritchie resident. So I ask us to consider that for the benefit of all.
We have, now I want to ask a question. We have a 16% discount, I believe, and Pasco's got a 20. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's some percentage difference, some, that sounds about right.
Nancy?
Carl, what year was your house built? And you're on one level.
I'm pre-firm.
Are you pre-firm myself? Did you get, you got the letter from FEMA?
Oh, yeah.
So, so, well, we can chat afterward, but I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that because I've-
Well, I feel a, it's going to be painful.
Not much you can do. Yeah, well, okay.
What letter? I'm sorry.
Digress a little bit, but all, we have a lot of pre-firm homes in, in Port Ritchie, a lot slab on grade and such. And the building department, Bill can probably talk more about this. But we all receive letters that we all have to have flood certificate or elevation certificates in order to not incur 20%, 18% annual increases in our flood insurance rates on perpetuity until you get a flood, elevation certificate. So it's still, I still interpret it from the standpoint that we still may get slammed even if we get this, but that seems like the only reasonable alternative from my initial interpretation.
Doesn't matter where your flood level is.
It does.
Just to have the certificate.
If you go, Vince can probably talk about this more, but there's a number of residents in the city that have elevation certificates. There's other of us that do, do not. So apparently they're pushing for everybody to have an elevation certificate-
Correct.
-across the board.
But does the elevation change your flood insurance range?
I believe so. Just like we're in a, a V-zone or an A-zone or whatever it happens to be, there's a different, different rate depending where you are. So basically-
It was my understanding that if it's above 12 feet, then yes, it might determine a less, less of an, of an increase. But if you're under that, it's, it, I thought 12 feet was the base flood level. Because I remember that from when they built them homes, 12 or 13 feet, because when they built the homes across the street from me several years back, they built up the, the land to get them to that level.
It's, it's a little more, but I, I apologize for digressing. My only intent was if we could get to the Pasco County level, that might help everyone a little bit as flood-
We're working on it.
That is why you got an extra, I don't know how many minutes. Okay, moving on. Any thoughts?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So what's your thought on it, Vince? Is it worth getting, I'm still, I still haven't determined whether or not it's worth getting the certificate for my house. I doubt it.
I, I believe you should get a certificate for, for a lot of reasons, particularly if in the future date you intend to resell, sell the property. It'd be something that will be required for, from a future owner. And if you already have it, you have it. In the meantime, you can use it towards the, an analysis of your tax rate, I'm sorry, your insurance rate structure. We're, we're doing everything we possibly can to ensure through the building department that all new constructions, Whiskey Joe's is an example, meets the requirements so that there are, there are no adverse impacts to our insurance rates. Critical. One of the very first things I did back in 1996 was to address those insurance rates. And I, I continue to be very mindful because so many of our people live on the water.
Carl and I have talked about this, what, for two years now about the electrolysis in the canals. And it's something that has just laid on the table and has not had much attention, but I tell you, our citizens are being affected by it. And I know this especially because one of my neighbors, Bill, bought himself a brand-new, beautiful pontoon boat. Pulled it out a few months later and the entire thing was pitted. Now, it ate most of his anodes off of his engine, which is brand-new. So this isn't just a little thing that's happening. My own boat just had to replace the motor because I didn't realize it had eaten off all my anodes. And it chewed up, literally just disintegrated, the steering arm. So there's a lot in some places, I won't say everywhere, but we need to address this. It is damaging the citizens' property. So I think this should be this type of equipment, whatever it is, it can't be that much. And if we have to go in by water, then we go in by water and we check it. And when we find this, then we notify those people through code enforcement and something has to be done. It's, it's a danger to anyone that would fall in. It's a danger and detriment to the people that keep their boats in the canals in our city. So I think that's definitely- So I think that's definitely gotta be done.
I'll take that as an assignment for this coming year. Vice Mayor.
For the, uh, ground fault break?
Yeah.
Yeah, while I'm on that, I did notice...
It's more electrolysis in the water and several different issues with respect to the water itself.
Hey, Tim?
I'll, I'll take that as a, as, as an issue this coming budget, sir.
Tim, how much trouble do you have getting, I mean, if we were to offer, ground fault breakers aren't much, but just offer the service, give them, out of ten p houses, would you get trouble just to aid them in knowing from how many, nine?
We, we went in the canals and attempted to test it. We had a, uh, a probe that we could use that would detect electricity in the water. And the probes are like three thousand dollars for this probe, but the guy had given it to us for us to try it out and see how it worked. And we went into the canals and, uh, we found some residual electricity in the waters. But all of this is coming from people with docks that have lights in the water that they put in themselves. That none of this stuff was ever done by code or anything. And that's where we're gonna run into the problems at. Now, if we could find an area, then I just spoke to Bill and he was like, well, if we have a thought that there's a problem, we have the right to go in there and, and check it. So he educated me a little bit with that. So there is a possibility that we could do something with it.
I don't mean...
It's just a matter of, uh, putting a piece of equipment back in the, in the budget to, to do it.
Well, I, I just, as a citizen, if the city wanted to come out to my house and make sure that I didn't have electrical issues going into the water, that my grandchildren or somebody fell into the water could get hurt, I certainly would want you to come out and do that for me.
That's because you would have done everything right.
But can we not?
These people are doing everything right. They don't want to.
But the thing is, is even if it's not done right, or, or, or if it is done right, you don't know for sure.
Correct.
Until it's tested.
Things, things fail. I mean, pieces of equipment, especially electro, uh, electrical equipment, it fails. And we're right on the coast. We've got the saltwater coming in. You've got corrosion that's going on. Things happen. Even ground faults fail.
Well, I've been talking to the city manager and Mr. Muse about an idea I have, that's something I wanna bring up. And it might be popular and it could bring a lot of people out for permits.
Well, could we, uh, maybe, Bill, you can answer this. If we were willing to go test their water for free and can we give them a hold harmless that we, we're not looking for?
Can you give them amnesty on the, on the item, but have them correct it now and not hold them accountable for not permitting it earlier?
I'd have to have Mr. Matthew answer that question. I don't, I'm not sure about that.
Can you waive the permit fee?
Well, saying that we're not gonna catch them and hold them because they didn't do it, but if they get it fixed now.
Yeah. Generally, if someone didn't get it, there's two things going on. I would presume someone that did without a permit or someone that did it with a permit and hasn't maintained it, right? So if you did it without a permit, I'm sure we could pass some regulations to waive it, even if we have to amend the code. We could do that, I guess, is short answer.
Okay.
I don't think that's a problem really.
Well, maybe keep somebody from not getting them on their dock because they're afraid they're gonna get in trouble about it.
Yeah, really.
But this is... I didn't even know you needed it.
This is an issue we can bring back at another, regular council, yeah.
I guess, I guess my point I was trying to make is, um, I don't, you know, the city has certain latitude in deciding somebody twice to not get it approved. But if they have a problem there, well, we're gonna make them get a permit to fix the problem.
Right.
Okay, so in other words, I think that would be fine, right, if someone came in. So, you know, normally if they had done it, we don't know if they did it ten years ago or twenty, it'd be a little hard to say you did something without a permit, but it's fun to make them get a permit to fix the problem.
Right.
So it's a short answer. It's not a problem to do that.
When you're talking about, you could, um, electricate your neighbor, right? Is that correct? Why don't we just give them, I don't know?
Electrolysis usually though is, is very low voltage, just so you know. The amperage is not there.
Yeah.
The voltage is very, so it's not typically a health risk as it is to, as the metal items on the boat. I mean, it can be, but typically it's not.
Yeah, that, we brought that up, Carl had, uh, well, um, a couple of years ago. We, I don't know, everybody rolled it in your head. I think we ought to te- test it and not charge them and tell them they could be killing themselves. That said, anyone else have a?
We have a staff that's gonna be here again tomorrow, so.
Yep.
Well, that's the question is...
Another workshop tomorrow.
Do you wanna have another workshop? Are you happy with this? I would put three thousand in for that equipment.
Yeah.
Uh, I honestly don't, I, I believe we have the consensus of council. I don't believe you need a workshop tomorrow. We'll disseminate some additional information.
There was one thing I did notice. Uh, Dale brought it up, that, uh, the city attorney was twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
I noticed there were three places that it was at. Was it duplicated in those? It was on page thirteen at twenty-eight thousand, then on twenty-six, there's a fourteen thousand.
Nancy, may I have got more than your share?
Yeah, they're, they're spread out, no, they're spread, the funds are spread out. The bills are spread out over several different locations, including CRA.
Are they inclusive or separate?
They're, they're separate.
They're separate?
Yeah, they're separate for each...
Three twenty, I thought that twenty-eight is the same number each time though, I think, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Well, then it's not three times that.
Okay, and twenty-six was fourteen thousand.
Correct.
No.
That's in addition to...
They're different funds.
I think you're worth it anyway, but if...
Essentially, every employee, not every employee, many employees are paid out different funds. Some are CRA and general fund, some are solely general fund. Some are utilities, some are public works. So it depends on what funds are on.
Yeah, they can...
Yep. And, uh, the one thing I, I did, I, I should have highlighted to council and, uh, it will be for council's consideration and it can be at any time in the future, uh, in this budget, there has been set aside a four percent, up to four percent increase for employees. It's in this budget. If this budget passes, city council will then have the opportunity to not implement it or to implement it in any one of those four phases. Uh, that same, there was an amount set aside last year, which is, uh, that was not acted upon by council and which is carried forward. So I'm giving council the opportunity to consider a four percent raise for our employees, but it's in here. Again, uh, it will be your decision at a future date as to whether or not you wanna implement it, not implement it, or implement it in any series of that four percent.
That raises a question, uh, Mr. Lupo, we just got done with, um, your evaluation. Uh, if we were to decide to do anything, uh, I take it this four percent does not include your salary?
No, sir, it does not include mine, no.
If we would decide...
No, my request, my request is, is simple. Um, I'm requesting, I would be requesting, uh, for councils to consider a, I, I don't have a city vehicle, a three hundred dollar a month allowance towards a vehicle, towards my utilization of my vehicle. And I would like a salary of ninety thousand dollars a year. Um, that is commensurate with, uh, many other communities and it is less than, quite a bit less than some of the cities, city managers that you've paid in the past. And, um, that is a request that I have personally. It's there in the budget.
Oh, you told me eighty thousand in the car.
No, sir.
Forty acres of the meal?
You did that, you started eighty thousand last year with that. No, sir. It's ninety thousand dollars. This is what I'm requesting, very simply. If council would be gracious enough to consider my salary at ninety thousand dollars plus three hundred dollars a month for...
What's your salary now, eighty?
No, seventy-seven five. Um, one thing I think is...
I did get Jim to cut him down twenty-five hundred dollars when we hired him. And, uh, I think it was a well, good move, but...
I'm quite, by the way, I would like to thank council for their evaluation and the suggestions in those evaluations. I think they were extremely helpful. I'm buttressed by your comments and I feel encouraged by your, um, by your comments and, and directions that you've given me. I've taken them to heart. I've talked to my staff about them and I intend to pursue them vigorously, provided you give me the opportunity to continue to serve this community.
Well, you certainly have the opportunity. I just don't know what price.
One thing Dale, uh, I discussed is, uh, with Mr. Lupo in, in that the homestead exemption, uh, change in two years is facing everyone. Um, it's, it's going to be painful. It's gonna be painful at the county. It's gonna be painful here. I was concerned with decreasing the tax possibly and then having to raise it substantially just, you know, in a year or so to meet this new demand, uh, because we will not have as much income out of that as we have had previously. But, uh, I will let Mr. Lupo speak to this because he told me it's already being handled.
My staff and I and the city attorney have sat and discussed this issue in depth. Uh, you brought it, uh, to my attention as did, uh, other council people. This city is in a very advantageous position. We, we are moving forward, um, with respect to growth. We have additional growth coming onboard in the, in the, this coming fiscal year that'll prepare us, in my opinion, for the hit that we're going to be taking with respect to the passing of the added homestead exemption. There are more properties that are coming online that will give us the added income, added, that will give us added income. I don't know at this state because it, um, I, I can't prognosticate the absolute facts and numbers, but I can tell you that there are projects currently being discussed, projects that are in works right now that will add to the overall, uh, taxes of the community. The exact numbers, we don't know because the county hasn't given us any indication of some numbers, but we are moving forward. Uh, and, uh, and I can cite some examples, um, of additional, uh, value coming to the community. Uh, Whiskey Joe's will be coming onboard, tax purposes. Uh, Walgreens is, it will be coming onboard eventually for tax purposes. The change from, um, the Nice of Columbus nonprofit to the Farrelly Convention Center is, will be coming onboard. There's, there are ser, and all taxable. There are several new properties that are gonna be, that are getting permit for construction. People have come in to review the, the potential revitalization of the Avila, uh, Avila Bay project. Um, the Cody River project is, is, will be coming on, fully onboard soon. So these are only part of the increases that will helpfully offset, um, uh, the, uh, reduction in revenue from the taxes due to the additional homestead. And again, the homestead value, uh, the properties, uh, has been shifting. So we're, we have been looking very carefully at that. At the same point in time, by, by judicious expenditure of the budget that you, you hopefully will improve and by being fiscally conservative in those expenditures, we can, we'll be holding back funds until we know the actual numbers or, or approximate numbers. So, uh, we have been in fact preparing for that. And we're, this community is in a very, very advantageous position in that our mileage, if you pass this budget, will only be five point seven five one eight. I cannot say that unfortunately for our neighbors who are knocking at the ten percent cap by law. As I stated earlier, it is my intention, even with that looming, uh, reduction in income, to try and reduce, reduce taxes to our citizens. Um, we're fortunate enough to be able to do it this year and I hope to do it again next year despite the, um, the hit that's going to become the following year from homestead. That's, that's what I'm, uh, that's what we've discussed and that's the preparations we've been making specifically for that. We, we cannot stand still. We have to look in the future in order to protect the city today and tomorrow. You can't fix a roof when it's raining. You gotta fix it now before it rains.
Where's the number we're at and where we're going? Five point seven, we're going to set five point seven?
If you pass this budget, you'll be setting five point seven five one eight.
Wh- where were we?
Five point seven five seven.
Well, it's a pittance. I don't know how you're gonna build your fiefdom, uh...
Well...
Nice to do that. Put that on your evaluation.
If, if council's kind enough to, to allow me to continue to be your city manager, I'm sure you'll all be able to do it.
I guess there's nothing to discuss this week.
Okay, I need a consensus here. Do you wanna have another budget workshop?
Can I have, oh, just a real quick question?
Please.
Red light.
Red lights, cameras?
Red light cameras. Where do we stand on that? At one point they were going to be outlawed. We were in court. We were trying to figure out what is going. If they go away, how's that gonna impact our budget?
Legislatively, Jim, do you wanna go?
Yeah, I, I'll answer the first half of it and I'm looking for the answer to the second half. Mr. Lupo and I were chatting about that contingency as well as what Mr. Councilman Rose brought up. Uh, still pending before the Supreme Court. We don't know yet, okay? All, I don't know, Jocelyn, what do you, you read the same stuff, fifty-fifty is what it sounds like. Yeah, they don't know yet. Uh, Supreme Court hasn't ruled on it yet. Believe me, I'll let you know the moment another case works its way up. Uh, in terms of what worst-case scenario, uh, give me a second to talk, look at...
Sure, please.
But remember we, uh, Aaron, you know, where, where's the, remember we chatted about the, uh...
My, I'm revenue line, I have three six nine three four one.
What page is it?
What page?
What's revenue I'm gonna draft? I wanna take out the expense. The end of Saturday, I want page nine. That's what I'm looking at here. So what, what do we have in revenue?
Page nine.
What, I'm sorry?
Nine hundred three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars.
That's revenue, right?
That's revenue.
All right, that's right, take out the expense. Let's go after it. Jenny's question. You got the two expenses?
Four hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred sixty.
Is that both expenses?
No.
All right, you gotta take them both out, right?
What are you looking at?
All right, hang on a second. I'll explain the second, uh, mayor.
About a two hundred thousand dollar difference.
Between the expenses and revenue, right? So if we lost the red light cameras, it'd be about two hundred thousand, right?
Correct.
The answer is we lose about two hundred thousand, two fifty, okay?
Okay.
We get some warning on that. Okay, I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon. It's not like tomorrow. If it happened, the ramification probably wouldn't happen till the budget, next budget.
Next year.
That's two hundred thousand dollars.
So we'd have time to, to recover or to wrangle around?
We, we talked about that, Mr. Lupo and I. We also discussed, Mr. Councilman Rose's question. We bring in ad valorem taxes, one point four million, okay? We can't seem to get figures. We tried to get some figures, Aaron and I, what, what the impact would be. We don't have, you don't wanna go pay someone to break down the numbers, but it's not gonna be three or four hundred thousand in that figure. It'd be more like a hundred thousand dollars. Matter of fact, the red light camera's probably more of a threat to us if that helps you at all in analysis. But we gave this a lot of thought in terms of cash flow, Mr. Lupo and I.
We sure did.
With some other things.
You know, we have to remember that the red light cameras are not a financial thing. It was a safety thing.
Correct.
So, um...
Correct. But...
Keep that in mind.
But the analysis that, that we've conducted, as, as Jim just explained to you, we're, we're really, this community is in an admirable position, coming and going. We've even added additional funds to our carrier and our reserves. We are in, in an admirable position this year. Last year's budget was, was a, was set superbly, in my opinion. We've implemented the goals and objectives of, of this budget, this, this year's budget, um, and, and gone beyond those goals and objectives. We picked up that momentum into this new budget that you're about to improve. And if things work out as they should normally... things work out as they should normally, conservatively, the city will be even in a, in a better fiscal position with respect to, to, uh, financing, funds, income, revenue, and productivity, uh, especially once we obtain our, our permit extension and begin dredging, and that's right around the corner, and, uh, it's here, we're now, the city has arrived, and we're on our way again.
Quick question about the dredging?
Yes, ma'am.
And we were talking about the electrical problem in the water?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be something that you could piggyback onto it when you go down the canal that they, they have to inspect all there?
That, it is, it is, but I hope to address that issue long before we get into...
Oh, I, I agree, because it's gonna take twenty years to get it all done, but I'm just saying, if we tag that on there, then maybe we can catch anything we miss.
It, it would, it would, ma'am, but I, I would hope to resolve that issue long before then.
That would be nice.
Yeah, so...
But if not, it would be nice to know that we've got that as backup down the line.
But, part of the dredging, part of the dredging may require, um, an individual to observe manatees and stargraz. I mean, so, we, we can at the same time put a probe in the water and check for, for, uh, electricity and do some chemical analysis, but long before then, I hope that we can sit down and begin to address these other issues, because, uh, even though they are not imminent, imminent life-threatening issues, they are safety issues, and they are monetary issues to our community, so I will, we'll be on that very quickly.
Do you think we could, uh, our manatee watch guy could also do the probes? He's gonna be too busy.
It depends on whether or not we can put it on the drone and have the drone do it.
Drop it. Okay, council...
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we wanna have the workshop...
Oh, no, we already said not.
Well, you've done that, and everybody's...
Good to go.
I don't either.
This is the budget.
Good to go.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, council.
Good job, guys.
Thank you, council.